The Kerrville City Council is now in session. Are there any public comments?
Yes, sir, we have one, Delane Sigerman.
Okay.
Good evening, good afternoon, council members and mayor. Thanks for letting me speak. It was a pleasure to serve on this task force, which started back in March. And the reason it did is we found ourselves perhaps a little off-guard when the pandemic hit and then the freeze. And I think it brought the question forward, and I think it's even said perfectly at the back of this report, we want to move from crisis mode to prevention mode. So how do we do that? So we spent five and a half, six months interviewing people in different cities, inquiring about how they were handling funding these, what should it be a public authority? Should it be just a health navigator? There's a myriad of things that we could do that could help us prevent being caught off-guard at the next situation should it come up. So I just want to encourage the council to do something, to start somewhere. We, I think we have a plan, and I think it'll be evolving. I don't think it'll start one way and end the same. I think as we can, we see this person, this point person or representative handling the data that we acquire from the nonprofits and how we see the health navigator following up when we have data as to what happened to this person, do they get what they need, and are they, are they still in need? And there's a lot to be done because we have a lot of nonprofits, just keeping up with their current hours and what they provide and what their address is and who is the person they speak with. There's a lot of things that change almost monthly. So I'm hoping we have a point person because right now we don't have a central location where we can funnel all of that information into one place. We, all of our nonprofits seem to know about each other, but they're not always able to communicate with each other and keep that, that data current. As far as John Smith came in, needed X, did John Smith get X? Did he get to the hospital? Did he get the dental attention that he needed? There's a whole lot of things. And then with the ice storm, I think, even then, I think a point person would be a great contact for questions like, who has four-wheel drives? Who has extra generators? Who has a fellowship hall that could be opened for sheltering? So I just hope we, we start something somewhere with a point person that'll help the city know that we're going to be prepared when this happens, and this is what we're going to do. And we have someone we can call and say, is Red Cross ready? Is Salvation Army open? Whatever those questions seem to be, but, and like I said, I think it'll be a work in progress. I think we have to keep that in mind, that we can't identify it perfectly yet, but we do have a person of interest, I think, that could get us on the ground running right now, who's been working with the, with the interagency, all the nonprofits. So I think we already are a little bit ahead of the game in that regard. So if you have any questions, reach out to me. I have a lot of notes I didn't bring with me tonight, but they're safe at home. I'd be happy to talk with any of you about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the citizen speakers.
All right. Okay, then let's go to the Mayor's Public Health Task Force Recommendations. Ms. Fulkerson is going to present that to us.
Good evening, mayor and council. In front of you, you have the presentation tonight over the Public Health Task Force So the very first slide just goes back over the assignment that the task force was charged with on March 23rd. So you all came up with the interest of considering issues related to public health in Kerrville and Kerr County and the improvement thereof. And the task force was to report the findings and recommendations back in a six-month timeframe. So the charge for the task force was to review public health issues in relevant communities that have existing local health resources available to them. And we were going to examine and develop those recommendations and come back to you all to see if we should consider creating or helping to create a local health authority. The next slide is just recognizing everybody that was a part of the task force. We want to give a huge thank you to every person that was on this task force. There was close to 20 when we started, and we had a great representation from all of the public health entities in Kerrville. So the first thing that we started, and in front of you, you have the presentation, and then if you'd like to follow along, I have a document that kind of goes over the background information, research, and just the steps that we went through throughout this whole process. So the first thing that we did was try and identify what local resources we had in Kerrville. So through the Department of State Health Services, they have about 14 essential health services that they tried to provide to each community. And it was found that all of them were being provided either by the Department of State Health Services, Kerr County, City of Kerrville, or another nonprofit entity. So we actually have an existing public health authority through the Department of State Health Services. Her doctor, her name is Dr. Ringsdorf. So while we don't have somebody that's housed here every single day, we have representation through Region 9. And her name is Dr. Ringsdorf. So she performs duties that are necessary to implement and enforce laws to protect the public health. She can issue quarantine, inspection, disease prevention and suppression, birth and death statistics, and general sanitation.
Megan, where is she located?
San Antonio.
San Antonio. Okay, and is it Region 9 or Region 8?
I think it's Region 8. I misspoke, yes.
Yeah, and there, there is a local DSHS office in the One Schreiner Center.
Okay.
And that, that's who provides a lot of those essential services that were mentioned on the previous slide. The next thing that the task force looked at was the Community Needs Health Assessment that Peterson Health Researches. The one that we looked at was from 2019. And just to note, these are updated every three years, so they are pretty current in our community. And as you can see, the top, out of the top three, the two that we've identified is access to care and insurance and mental health. So those are two huge issues here in Kerrville, and it's definitely noted in this Community Health Needs Assessment.
Do you know when the last time was that it was updated? What year?
So 2019 was the last one they put out.
Okay.
So they should have one. I believe they're, they were starting on it this year, and it was going to be reported next year.
Okay.
Megan, why are those, those two that you have bolded?
So I, I bolded those because throughout this, you'll see a trend in our findings that we have a huge need for mental health resources, as well as the access and connection to our existing resources we have out here. So as you can see, the number one is access to care and insurance. So access to care kind of ties in, you know, the trend of what this is going to be about. We have a lot of nonprofits and a lot of local health entities, but sometimes they don't talk to each other, or the people in the community don't know where to go, so they don't have the access to that care, whether they don't know how or they don't have a way to get there. So the next part that we did in the task force was contact some outside agencies. So the first one describes the interaction with Patricia Meckler. She's the health unit director from Medina County. So one of the first things that we did was go through on the Region 9, or Region 8, sorry. There's a lot of counties. I think there's around 27 counties that that covers. So we wanted to look at the local counties and see what they were doing in their communities. And so we had Patricia Meckler come out, and she gave a brief presentation at our task force meeting about what she does in Hondo, what they have, and how that kind of operates. And so she came and spoke with us, and then Councilmember Hughes, and Delane Sigerman and myself, we went to Hondo and actually looked at their health unit that they have there. And so they actually utilize Dr. Ringsdorf as their public health authority as well, but they have a health unit because they provide services. So they do immunizations, and they have a building that you can go to, but they only do that because they are providing services that the community doesn't already have. Then the next person that we spoke with, the next type of organization, was the Community Resource Centers of Texas. So that's actually a nonprofit organization, and their executive director, Donna Klager, came and spoke with us. And what they do is they put up these community resource centers, and I, there's four different areas that they have them at. And so it's basically one big place where every nonprofit or main essential service is provided at that one location. So you can make appointments to go see them, and that's what their nonprofit is. Now, they aren't expanding, which we were kind of bummed about, but they do consulting services, which she did in a, in a pretty good detail about what, what they're all about and what they can do. And so we also went and visited their location in Marble Falls to view their building. So it's a centralized location for public health entities, and that showed us the importance of establishing a health navigator. So basically, in these resource centers, when somebody needs something, they walk in and they're greeted by somebody to check them in, and they're sit down with the health navigator. So that person is tasked with identifying what their need is and connecting them with that resource right then and there. So that is going to be a trend in this, as well as the health navigator. So through our research, we've just identified some key insights through all these processes. So as I've mentioned, Kerrville has an extensive list of resources, a lot of people, agencies that are providing resources right now. So that's a great positive for our community. Another thing that we concluded was that there's definitely some enhanced collaboration needed amongst these services, so they can all speak to each other, and when there is a need identified, they can connect the person with the right agency. Then health needs that are not met typically become acute needs, and that utilizes a resource of Peterson Emergency Department. It goes through the City Emergency Medical Service Division of the Fire Department and the Police Department. So something I will elaborate on further is a system called the Mobile Integrated Health, and it, that just provides more enhanced collaboration with people who have mental health needs, and just helps those three entities work better together, so they're Another thing that we concluded through this process is that we need a centralized person or phone tree for somebody to call to get information. So there's a couple different ways that people need to get connected to resources, whether it's access by telephone or by location. And so the biggest thing is a resource center or a way to communicate that information. Another thing, there's a lot of grant-writing opportunities for public health, but we have to have somebody who is responsible for doing that, because the entities that are currently out there, they, they get grant funding while trying to do this job. So we need some, somebody who can address the public health needs through grant writing and specifically focus on that. Another big key issue is unmet mental health needs, and that just goes back through the, the response, how they get help and the continued help for mental health. And then once again, health navigators are essential for providing that client intake, building trust within the community, so people will feel comfortable to come and get help when that's identified. And then those health navigators will know exactly how to connect them to resources, and will have all of those answers in-house. Another thing that was specifically pointed out through the Community Needs Health Assessment is the access to resources with the low-income elderly, minority, and the homeless populations. And through our research, it was found that a lot of these entities that are helping currently have a huge volunteer base, so it's essential that we are able to develop a large volunteer base as well to get some of these things going and continuing and having that manpower from people that are actually out in the community. So currently, right now, we have health navigator models with Hope for Health in the Doyle Community and Light on the Hill. So they already provide a valuable resource to meet this need in Kerrville, but they need to be expanded. This, this model needs to be expanded to reach all of those that are not currently being served. So the response to the initial charge that the task force was charged with regarding the public health entity. So we, we actually don't need to create a public health entity at this time because all of our public health needs are being met by organizations currently. So we, we don't need to create something because it's already here. So the unmet need appears to be the better connection, again, in coordination with the agency resources, and which organization is best suited to provide that for Kerrville. So we've come up with a recommendation and action plan, and that's actually its own document on your table as well. So that just identifies some key objectives and action items, and just responses to how, you know, we could get something started in the community. So the guiding principles that we identified are coordination, communication, and finding So starting with coordination, and we need to enhance the coordination amongst the existing community health entities. We need to expand the network of local health navigators to get more, what we call boots on the ground, people that are actually out in the community, talking with people, uncovering those needs, and seeing how we can get them help. And again, the Mobile Integrated Health. Another few communication objectives is to improve the communication and coordination amongst the local community health agencies. There's actually an agency that puts together a resource guide, and we just, we feel that that needs to be maintained a little bit better and presented on more platforms so people can see what all of those organizations are and how they can get a hold of them. So improved communication and marketing to clients is what that would entail, through electronic, in-person, however we can identify to get that out in the public. The next is sustainable funding objectives. So we need to identify sustainable funding mechanisms for implementation of these key community findings and objectives that we've identified as a part of this task force. So it's very important that we, or members of the community, invest in grant writers to utilize the grant funding opportunities that are available, and promoting partnership and providing community accountability through potential contractual agreements. So here is potential implementation paths explored by the task force. So we have three different paths that we've explored and identified the pros and cons of each. So the first one discussed was a governmental entity creating a new department for this effort. So the, the pro for that is providing consistent accountability. Now the con would be utilizing taxpayer resources, and it would likely only be under one entity, and the state mandated essentials needed, they're already being met in the community, so there's really no need to start something new. The next one would be the new nonprofit entity. So the pros, the nonprofits may be better able to get grant funding, and they may be better in service delivery than a governmental entity. The con is, it's creating a new nonprofit that may be administratively burdensome and consume a great deal of time and energy.
Looking at that plan, what would we think the city's role would be to create a new nonprofit entity?
So I, I don't know that it would be the city that would be creating it, more or less those public health entities coming together to see who that would better suit.
Okay.
Again, these aren't necessarily city recommendations, they're more community recommendations.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, from, from the whole task force, not just city staff. Then this one is expansion and collaboration with an existing nonprofit to better serve the community, utilizing additional funding sources. So this has a likely benefit of an existing administrative managerial and service delivery structure from somebody who's already doing this. It could be funded through multiple agencies and have funding through both public and private help and through private philanthropy. And accountability for service delivery is established by contractual funding agreements if public or, you know, private entities were used for that funding. So that would be a great pro. And the, the only con for this one would be additional funding to increase the level of service delivery beyond what they're already doing. So, so like I said, we do have people that are already following a model similar to this, they just don't have the resources to expand.
Yeah, you know, I, there are many entities out there that have their pulse on the heartbeat of this issue, and they're all collaboratively understanding that they need to invest more resources in order to make the situation better. There's a homeless coalition out there. I just left a meeting that I had with them, and Salvation Army has decided that they are going to increase the stay from three days to seven days. That starts, I believe, the first of the year. So they're actively engaging in trying to help us all find a solution to this major problem that we have with our homeless community. So that's, that's the one thing. They also discussed getting a list together. This is the, the homeless coalition itself, getting a list together of every resource that they know so that they can also assimilate a, a master, you know, for lack of a better term, a master list that we can all start using in order to get these people to the places they need to go when they need to get there. So that's, that's what I found out today, anyway.
That's great.
So Megan, in this, if, say, you know, just, I'm just using examples. Say, Light on the Hill was identified as an entity to put this together. It wouldn't, it, it isn't felt that it would affect others, other entities in maybe grant I'm, I'm trying to, would it make some of the others less effective than they are now? I mean, I understand the necessity of bringing it all together, but if it, I guess I'm thinking of funding more than anything for some of the others that if it would cause them to lose some of their, what they can do right now.
No, no, let me, let me answer that. The idea would be in terms of grant-writing help, that if somebody is, is meeting health needs, we hope that through the additional grant-writing effort, they would have more resources. It's not to take resources away from the nonprofits, but a place like Light on the Hill, wherever it, it, wherever it is located, we hope will strengthen them, but it's also the idea of how you strengthen other nonprofits, like Raphael Clinic and, and the Hope for Health Program at the Doyle Center and that kind of thing. I, I think the, the other thing I was going to say that, let me just back up a little bit. It kept coming up, the idea of we need to get, we need to get all the nonprofits in one place. Well, that's been tried repeatedly. It hadn't worked, and it's not going to work. But if we have someone at a local nonprofit, one to be, to be, yet to be identified, who is taking care of the telephone calls and working with the navigators, then we can, we can strengthen overall what we're doing in public health. That's, that's the basic idea. But, but, so it's not the idea of bring all the nonprofits together. In fact, the Community Resources Center, they don't really bring all the nonprofits in Marble Falls or Lano or what, under one roof. But what we need is what Millie Good is doing already with the Interagency Council. She's keeping the website up to date of what's available, who's doing what, hours and everything else. We hope to give some support to that, because that's going to be vital to this whole effort.
Right, and just to add to that, it would be for a health navigator, which, like Mayor said, it would alleviate all of the stresses that all of these other nonprofits are getting from all of these calls and people who don't know how to get their resources. And then those nonprofits aren't able to connect them with the resources because they're already swamped with what they're receiving. So if we're, if, if there is a health navigator that's able to, you know, be created at one of these existing nonprofits, it's going to build up the entire community by providing that missing puzzle piece to get everybody connected and everybody working together.
And what we found was that you can give somebody information, they call somewhere and they can get information, but often they find out, oh, wait a minute, that nonprofit doesn't do that, or doesn't do that anymore, or that nonprofit is not working anymore, or whatever else, and they become frustrated and quit. But the navigators, which is building on what Hope for Health is already doing at the Doyle Center, helps folks get to that health, health need or health opportunity, and then follow up with them, call, see what's happening, and that kind of thing. So it just helps us get people to the need, their opportunity to get that help that they have, so.
Going back to some of the implementation paths, I guess Mayor Councilmember Hughes or Megan, one of y'all can speak since y'all were there at the meetings, did they have, were they more inclined on one of the three implementation paths that we have presented here, or was it just open, or were they more inclined on one of them than any of the others?
I'm, I'm going to go ahead on that one. Well, what is being done in Medina Valley is, is very effective, but it is, it's not a model that we would really adopt because those services are already being created by the State Health Services Department here. The other options of going to, like from a public health unit to a public health department or something like that, as you go up that scale, it is more regulation, more legal, more local money, although there is state money. So the idea was, okay, the basic services are being So, the idea was, okay, the basic services are being, already being done here. So, let's not go that direction and create something else. This looks kind of minimalist in that you've got somebody who's gonna coordinate and the answering of the phone and response that way, and the navigators following up. We feel like it's good for this community.
Okay.
So, are you finished?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
So, I guess my question is, or questions, I guess to any of you. What do, what does the task for, where is the task force now as far as meeting? Is it completed? Is this the completion of the task force? And then where do we go from here? And then what is the expectation of the city's involvement going forward? What do you see that looking like?
Hey, we were to come with a recommendation within six months, which we have. But as you can tell, and as Ms. Seigerman mentioned a while ago, yeah, it is a work in progress on some of the details. But the basics is something that we're ready to present to the council and move forward. And I'm gonna let Mr. Hoppe follow up on that.
Yeah, so I think the basic charge was to go out there and research because it is such a difficult issue and there is no easy answer, right? And so, I think there were some twists and turns along the way. But I think that the general scope of the findings, you know, certainly lend itself to a direction of needs that are not being currently met in a number of ways, even despite the numerous resources that are out there. And so, you know, I think the task force came to the conclusion that for the community to really take that next step, there are going to need to be additional resources provided, you know, by a multitude of partners, right? And so, that may be a partnership between the city, the county, the hospital, all providing some resource to be able to, for an entity, maybe that's already out there through a contractual relationship, to be able to scale up their operation and better provide for the community in a number of ways. They're already doing great work. Unfortunately, they are strapped for resource and not able to really take it to that next level. And so, through a very, through a very tight scope of services that could be developed amongst those entities and with annual accountability through a contractual relationship, I think that's really kind of the direction that the task force landed.
Do you see anything that, do you, have you identified committee, city manager, Megan? Have y'all identified specific nonprofits that might best be suited for this? And if so, do you foresee any fighting, not fighting, but any competition for resources? You're talking grant writers. I mean, that sounds pretty inviting for any nonprofit to have that additional resource and not have to fundraise it as nonprofits typically do, at least to a certain extent, it sounds like. And I'm all for it, I'm not against this. I'm just wondering, I'm wondering as a council member, when we have some ask what that looks like and, you know, are all of the nonprofits on board? Because if you alienate some by picking a nonprofit to be the one that gets the additional resources, what does that look like in a real life scenario, basically? And then, so that's one thing. And then I'll just, my one other thing I wanted to mention is that even just today, someone from our office came and talked to me today and asked me for resources. But I think we all know that when we have someone with health needs that doesn't have access, which is one of the biggest or the biggest identified need here, that's typically one of many needs that they have. They're gonna need access to food, they're gonna need access to, you know, relief on utilities. They're gonna need access to, you know, any assistance in any number of ways. And has that been considered as far as maybe future efforts for this position, once we establish kind of that health network?
Let me answer that. I think you're right, and that's something that's come up repeatedly in the task force. There are people actually on the task force who are already involved in taking calls from people and trying to address needs. And you're right, often it is multiple needs. Our hope is in this, that when you have up-to-date information about all the services that are available, and it is mainly nonprofits, but also governmental services, then you can help folks get to, you know, they, if they know, I can go here and get some help here, get some help here, so forth. I think that's gonna be a part of it. So, it's not just one thing. Yes, health is the main thing, but there are other things that impact that. And again, we found that to be true in the Hope for Health program at the Doyle Center. And the navigators there can identify a particular need. But for instance, just let me give you an example. If you've got, if you've got somebody with significant respiratory issues, then there may be something that needs to happen at that home. And there are, through ACOG and other resources, ways to get those folks better windows, better doors, better air in their homes, that kind of thing. But you gotta know people that know, know that and know where it is. In regard to competition among the nonprofits, if we say, okay, here is this nonprofit that we believe best fits the needs of housing this, there may be some that may differ with that or whatever. But we've had a number of those represented on the task force, and nobody has raised that as an issue. The other thing, when you're talking about grant writing and getting resources, of course, all nonprofits won't help in that regard. But what we need to look at is, what are the key nonprofits addressing public health needs that we've identified? How can, how can we help them, you know, address those better? But it's that connection. Here's what we've identified, and what Peterson Health has identified as needs. And then here are agencies that are helping to do that.
Another question that I have, we talked about, you used the words "health authority." And I think for a lot of people, health authority was what Uvalde had for shots for the pandemic. And this, and what this addresses is vitally important. But how would that play into this? I don't hear that.
Yeah, I'm gonna let EA answer that.
Yeah, so really what we identified was that that existing legal mandate is satisfied through Dr. Ringsdorf in Region Eight. And so, there is not a need to have a duplicative local health authority component to that because she really serves that function for us. And so, because through the services that DSHS and other, and MHDD in that list of essential services, both with Dr. Ringsdorf and those local agencies are satisfying all of those essential state mandated requirements. So, it's really, what is unique about Medina Valley is that they created that entity to serve both those essential needs and then go above and beyond. And so, really some of the great work that they're doing is the above and beyond work, which is what a lot of our nonprofits are doing. It's just spread out across a lot of different agencies. And so, that's kind of the uniqueness between what I think we found in the Medina Valley model versus what, you know, are some of the infrastructure, so to speak, that already exists in Kerrville.
And if I may add, so in Uvalde, they did a public health authority, which, so they already have, so Dr. Ringsdorf serves all of these counties regardless. If there is a need identified at the community and they would like to start something to serve that need, they can do a public health authority at their community. So, that's what Uvalde did whenever the pandemic started to get the vaccines, is they brought in somebody as a public health authority. That's all they did. They did not create a department or anything like that. They just had a public health authority there so that they could directly offer those immunizations through that service. So, in our research, whenever we called them, they don't do anything else. The gentleman that was appointed as their health authority, he does not do anything. He's just kind of waiting out his term. But they specifically started somebody for that one purpose, for the vaccine.
So, we're really looking at two different things.
Yes.
Okay.
And that was a very, the Uvalde instance, what we found, interestingly enough, was a very temporary and very contractual relationship.
Okay.
For a very specific need.
Okay.
And in a lunch today, somebody brought up the issue of our not getting vaccine, the immunizations early like Uvalde and Fredericksburg did, for instance. And that is an issue. But I think what we're doing here in the coordination of addressing public health needs would help us in the future. The other thing that'll help us is to lean on our state rep, our state senator, make sure if we're in a situation like that again, that we get adequate immunization.
And I think it's going to be important that the public, because health authority for a lot of people is just, it's what Uvalde was able to offer and Kerrville was not able to offer, which was, caused a lot of concern. So, that's why I was asking that question, is how does it differ? And would this eventually, I mean, could this help us? If we were in need of that again, could it help us instate it or put it in place?
Megan, you may tell us, do you have an answer from Dr. Ringsdorf in regard to that?
So, once again, at any time we can stand up our own public health authority, if as a community we identify that we have one specific need that we would like to address as Kerrville, then we can stand somebody up, as long as we follow the DSHS protocols. So, she does it under a big umbrella, so she may not know that our community needs X, Y, and Z a little more than the other 20 that she's serving. So, at any time, we are able to go in and follow all of those protocols to get somebody started here as a public health authority, to have that direct access to the state, to be able to do all of those services. So, we don't have to choose today to do it or tomorrow to do it. We can do it at any time that our community needs. But we can also do what we've brought to you without having to find somebody because we have her already serving that. So, our options are open in the future. If something else comes up that we identify, we need somebody here in the community that is getting that direct access to the region.
Have you gone far enough with this? Was there any discussion about you would let different groups apply? I mean, we've talked about competition between the groups a little bit. I think our groups or nonprofits are such that I don't think there would be a big problem. But would it be an application form, or are you that far along? That three or four, you tell them, we'll take an application. What resources do you have right now? How do you feel you could build that?
I think it's probably, one method may be, we've got a number of these entities that have a health navigator model that has been employed successfully at a certain scale. And so, you know, I think if that is something that the council wanted to move forward with and look at exploring a contractual relationship, you know, I think, you know, some one-off conversations with that handful of entities, I think, would probably be one of the next steps.
You would look at.
And I will say that in conversations with a couple of people that are involved in this, and one on the task force and one day-to-day kind of work, we've talked about about six key agencies that would really help us get this done. But like I say, that doesn't, that doesn't mean there wouldn't be help for one, another one that is addressing public health in some way. But I think you have to, you don't wanna make it too cumbersome or too big as your key group. But anyway.
I think it, I'm sorry. I think it's also important to recognize, you know, this isn't the city trying to go about this alone, right?
That's what I was going to mention.
There's also additional conversations that we need to have with the other agencies that were, other public and, public agencies that were involved in this task force. Kerr County, certainly these health issues stretch beyond just our city limits, right? And in fact, beyond our county boundaries, and Peterson Health as well. As one of our primary healthcare providers in the region. The, I think what we recognized was that by taking a more reactionary, for all of these entities, by taking a reactionary stance, there is a cost, certainly, to that, those acute needs that come up that then have to ride in the city's ambulances, that have, folks that have mental, unmet mental health needs that then have to utilize sheriff resources or KPD resources, or both of those types of acute needs that end up in our emergency health department. And so, there are absolutely costs that each of these agencies end up accumulating that if perhaps spent in a more proactive stance, through some contractual relationships with some great healthcare providers out there or some great nonprofit entities, maybe we could help minimize those acute need costs, reactive costs.
Yeah, a perfect example of that is my homeless guy that I had for four and a half months. He told me one day, he said, I haven't had my thyroid medicine for six months and I really, really need it. I'm supposed to take it every day. And I said, well, why, first of all, why didn't you say something sooner? And second of all, where do we get this from? And he said, well, I just call an ambulance. And the ambulance comes and gets me and takes me to the ER, and then they refill my prescription.
Oh, my God.
So, but my question to you, Megan, is that Dr. Ringsdorf with Region Eight, she's paid by the Department of State Health Services. If we got a local authority here, let's say we had another pandemic and we needed more vaccines or whatever, we decided to get a public health authority here in Kerrville, who would pay for that position?
That's through grants. That's how those positions are funded, are typically through grants. And I believe some local support. And just to follow up with that, with Medina County, they only receive $10,000 from their county for help. The rest is grant funded. So, just to paint a better picture of that, when we're talking about picking a nonprofit or building upon a nonprofit, it's not funding another person. It's giving them enough to get somebody in there who can get the grant funding. Because Medina County, they get thousands, like hundreds of thousands of dollars just by having their main director have the time to do those grant funding, the grant applications. They get hundreds of thousands of dollars to fund things. So, it wouldn't be, you know, the city would, you know, hire a health navigator. It would, it would be these different entities putting together little bits of funds so that somebody would be, just being able to start up and get those big grant monies. But from mine, it's not a, from my perspective, it's not a state-paid position. It's all through the grant fundings and how you're able to get fundings and what services you're providing. If you're only providing one type of service, you're not going to be eligible for this bucket of grants. But if you have a big health department, that health authority can be set up and you can have access to all of these different things. So, you know, if we're just looking into one service, there's not very many buckets of grant funding that we would be able to look at applying for.
Well, and I think.
But one thing, the county has been involved in this process. The county has agreed to set aside some money to begin, and I'm sure the city will as well. Also, there's some folks working on a grant right now. If we approve this, there could be money to kick this off and get it started. So, yeah, go ahead.
When you say approve this, we don't really have something here to, I mean, I know we're workshopping and we're not planning to. But even at this point, I'm still feeling like there's more work to be done before we're at that point for the, right? Because I'm not feeling real clear.
There isn't anything tonight that is set for approval by the council. It's just simply for, you know, delivery of these recommendations and dialogue from the council. And really, you know, the council stood up this task force. And so, it's just a question of, you know, is there additional work that's desired by the council for the task force to evaluate? Is there additional work for staff to go do in exploring contractual relationships? It's simply meant to provide you guys an opportunity for comment.
Because I mean, I guess for me, I would feel uncomfortable funding based on what we have now because I don't really know what that looks like. I understand what everyone's saying and I, and I get it, and I think it's good. it's good and I, I see the need. It'd be hard for me to, to say yes to applying dollars to something that's, it's, that's as, that's as big as what this could pretend, as, as many directions, I guess, that this could go at this point.
Well, and I think it's important that the public understand that this is not a city-funded project. And, and even though it was, it has, the task force has been put together by the city, it, it's going to be a community thing.
But I mean, I think we'll be asked for funds, I think, is what I'm thinking, is, is that something that, am I wrong to think that, that we'll be asked at some point to, to make some sort of financial contribution?
Yes, yes, right. And, and potentially ongoing, but what we hope is that it's set up in a way when we can utilize those grants for public health and really carry it forward. I, I think the other thing is that, you know, we've, we've used the term organic to, to, I mean, we're not at a, we're not at a final place.
Right.
But we wanted to bring it before the council. You look at it.
Yeah.
You know, talk along the way to Megan, to EA, me, Brenda who's on the, is on the task force and others.
So the, one of the documents you have is the guiding principles, objectives, and action items. So this is probably one of the closest things that the task force has come to that is something that can actually be done.
Okay.
So if anything, tonight, you know, looking through this, these are things as a community that we could do to improve public health, which is what we, the task force was designed to do. So, you know, it may not be funding somebody tomorrow, but it may be focusing an effort into, under coordination, enhancing the coordination through an electronic database. You know, there's, this whole plan here has actionable items that don't cost anything, but it's more accountability that the task force has identified that we could do to promote, you know, the improvement of public health through this part. And it's kind of like a guide of how, you know, how involved do we want to get moving forward in these efforts and what that might look like. This is just kind of a, a sample of what we've identified that can actually be done tomorrow, starting tomorrow.
Well, and, and I know we need to move on. Uh, and there were some concerns brought to, I know myself and possibly you as well. And, and just to be clear, this sounds very specific, very specific. The words I'm hearing are advocacy, navigation, coordination, but not mandates. We're not looking at putting in place any kind of public health mandates.
No, no.
And I think that's important for the public to know as well, that this is an advocacy and a assistance, but not a mandate.
Right, right.
And I think this, this, the purpose of doing this was, instead of having the continued conversation of, there's a problem, there's a problem, this put the time into it to see what the problems were in Kerrville and how we could help. Not creating any new issues, but how to help those citizens who genuinely need help and trying to identify actual small items that we can move forward with to get that accomplished instead of continuing the discussion for more years to come.
So what would, who would this fall under to kind of see that some of this coordination and, and better communication could happen?
So that's what would need to be identified. So we, we've listed out, you know, what the needs are. We have the people, we had the people at the table who could help go forward. And I think it's more now an effort of seeing, you know, sitting down and looking at the, what's more important, you know, what's the most important on this paper, say we go with this? Who does that look like? That's the next step, is who does that look like? And, you know, how can they be supported? Not the city's taking on this document and we're gonna go do this. It's continuing the conversation to see who, who's better tasked at doing that and who would be accountable for that in the future to make sure that this is something sustainable.
Again, there's a number of paths that could be employed, right? And then that could be a governmental entity, could be a new nonprofit, it could be an existing nonprofit. And so that's really what the community's gonna have to decide. And there's multiple entities that are gonna be involved, I think, in that decision, uh, potentially moving forward because there's multiple, uh, entities in Kerrville that are affected by it.
Well, yeah, because, for instance, there's a veterans homeless population. There's a foster child homeless population. There are single women with children and pets homeless population. And they all get services from different people. You know, I mean, I can take my homeless guy to the VA center and they're not gonna touch him because he's not a veteran. And then, then where do I go from there? You know, and, and just that track to find the help you need for the person that you're dealing with is, is a monumental type of effort to get accomplished.
You know, just one thing, we talked about navigators. Tracy Davis from Peterson Health and, uh, executive in nursing, uh, after our last meeting, she said to me, she said, "I developed the navigator program for cancer patients at Peterson Health." And what they were finding was with, uh, persons who are dealing with, with cancer, they need help getting, and their family needs to help getting from one step to the next step to know what the resources are and that kind of thing. And so the model is out there in a lot of places of, of how we can do this. The other thing I would say, Chief Maloney's here with us, if this can be done effectively, we could reduce some of the load on emergency management services. We could reduce the load on the emergency department of Peter, Peterson Health, which can help all of us. And, uh, but that's, that's one, one way. But the basic idea is coming out of the pandemic and the winter storm was, hey, there's some health needs out there, public health needs that are not getting addressed. How can we do that? Because you got folks in a clinical setting with a doctor's office or at the hospital, they're getting, they're getting health needs met. But there are other folks out there with real needs that are not. So, uh, that's the basic idea.
What kind of direction or directive are y'all seeking from council right now? Is there anything you want us to give you in terms of what you presented to us today and moving forward?
Not specifically. I, I mean, we, you know, again, this was really delivery of, of these findings and, you know, I imagine this is not gonna be the only dialogue that council has. I suspect there's gonna be, need, need some time for digestion of this material. Uh, there's a lot here, a lot of great work that the task force did. And so, um, you know, we'll, we'll certainly welcome guidance from the council and, and other public agencies in, in Kerr County as we continue to progress.
Mm-hmm, alright.
Is the task force done with its meetings? Or are y'all still gonna do some more on what's been presented here?
I'm sorry, what?
I was just curious, is, is the task force like pretty good on its meetings or like is it done pretty much or?
The, the task force has received the, uh, research background and the, uh, suggestions of implementation and now in the process of getting feedback and so forth. It was a very good task force, very good representation, and, uh, I think they, they did a good job.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I want to thank everybody who served on that and, and that helped put all this together and staff as well for all y'all's work. So, thank you.
Alright, okay.
So we could just digest this and then maybe bring it back in a, a couple of months if, or a timeframe?
Absolutely, future agenda item if desired by the council at a later date.
See what else we could do.
That's correct.
And how to move forward. Okay.
Alright, uh, we are out of that, uh, workshop. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
To go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session under section 551.074.
Alright. Okay. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Okay. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand? Alright, and we will adjourn to.
Megan, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Upstairs?
Yes, sir.
The Kerrville City Council is now in session. That's right, we have one item. We just got out of another meeting. And we have one item out of that, if you would give us.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a personnel action form based on the council's discussion in regard to the evaluation of city attorney Mike Hayes.
Alright, do we have a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor. Let me know by the raised hands, alright? Okay. So we're out of the executive session.